And then another is just a pipe that you can see where it's a little pipe, it's cracked, it's busted, it's separated, there's roots growing into it. So every single time it rains, these kinds of defects in your sewer collection system allow rainwater to come in. They then go to the treatment plant, you have to pay money to treat it, put it back in the river, and it also, you know, takes up capacity within your system and prevents you from being able to add new customers, whether that be single-family homes, new businesses, to your collection system because we don't have capacity within the pipe network to carry their flows. This is a graph from that flow study, just to kind of give you again, back to the project need, what's driving this. As you can see, the black line is the total flow into the sewer plant. You can see that kind of on the left-hand side over there where it says 2021 at the bottom. Your average flow into your treatment plant's about 350,000, 400,000 gallons a day, kind of ranges throughout the day. And then it rains, and all of a sudden you have two and a half million gallons of water that try to go to the treatment plant, or 2.7. So those peaks are what we're trying to get rid of. We're trying to get rid of these issues where your sewer system is completely full of water, trying to get to the treatment plant. You know, that causes all kinds of problems for pump stations, for their operations, and obviously, you know, there's a chance when sewer systems fill up like that, that some low manhole acts as a relief for a system and allows flows to escape. As part of that study, we broke the town's collection system up into four basins. This is generally how the basin is laid out, we call them A, B, C, and D. Pretty straightforward. Scott, if you want to... And so through that study, we were able to see how many defects versus how much flow came in from each one of those basins. And so this is how we determined what areas of your collection system and of the town of Carthage to focus on here with the money that you're going to be spending as part of this project. So as you can see, there were two basins, what we called B-102, and then C-01, which had a high number of defects, and then quite a bit of water that was coming in. So through that, we said, okay, a lot of defects, a lot of water coming in, you know, those are the areas that we're going to target with this initial project. And this kind of gives you, this is an overview map that we sent to SRF about project location. It's not very specific, obviously, as you can tell there. I do have a set of plans. If anybody is here after this public meeting, wants to look at them, ask any questions, I'm available. But this is to show you that there is some work basically being done all over the city, whether that is manhole rehabilitation, pipe rehabilitation. We're targeting these major defects that we found through that study, and, you know, areas of high INI that were identified in order to maximize this initial project to reduce flows as much as Project scope, we're looking at approximately 13,000 linear feet of pipe rehabilitation or replacement. So the pipe will be rehabilitated by a process called CIPP, or cast-in-place pipe. We pull in a liner, it's inverted. As it pulls in, it's in a, it's basically, it looks like a sock if you were to look at it, and it has fiberglass resin. We pump hot water in there, that inflates it, and the heat of the water hardens the resin, and it binds itself to the old pipe, and you get a brand-new fiberglass pipe inside of whatever old pipe material was there. Then we come back through that with a robot. The robot cuts the surfaces out, and then that's how everything gets reinstated. So for the most part, unless we have, there's a break within that line, or something within that line that causes us to have to dig down and replace a section of pipe before we can put in the CIP liner, there'll be very, anywhere we can do just straight CIP, we won't have to excavate the pipe, so we won't be digging in the road, we won't be digging, you know, so minimal, minimal impact to everything. There are some places that just need to be replaced, and places that just have completely collapsed sewer segments, and those will have to be open-cut and replaced. Through this, we'll also be rehabilitating 71 manholes, and then reconnecting approximately 194 sewer service connections. So for every, everywhere that there's a, you know, that's that CIP method, if there is a clean-out, then we won't have to do anything with the customer's side. If there's not a clean-out, we'll have a clean-out install on the line, and that delineates the ownership between the town of Carthage's sewer system and the owner's property. Project benefits, as I said, you know, we're going to reduce the flows. This will create additional capacity within your collection system to allow for future growth and accommodate future connections. We're going to lower the sewer system operational cost by helping reduce the flows that are going to the pump stations ahead of the treatment plant. We're going to reduce the flows and decrease those likely, the likelihood of surcharges and discharges, or overflows that could happen in the system in high rainfall events. Project schedule, today being the ninth is when we're having the public meeting. All of this information, along with the list of people who are here, so we'll go to SRF. SRF will use this as part of their loan approval process, this is one of their requirements. Once, excuse me, once the loan approval process is complete, they will sign a contract with the town of Carthage and finalize a loan. We expect that to be done sometime around the first of May. As soon as that's done, the project is designed, and it is ready to go out to bid, we'll be able to get it out to bid, advertise it. We're anticipating May 30th, June 30th to open those bids, have the project awarded, and the award approved by SRF by September 28th, and get construction started on this project in November. And then, as you see, construction, we anticipated, take about 240 days or wrap up around July 25th of 2026. The project is funded by an SRF loan, Clean Water SRF loan, and the probable cost for the project is set at $2.7 million, and Clean Water Fund is going to provide a loan for that $2.7 million. Of that loan, there's $540,000 in principal forgiveness. So they reduced the amount of the $2.7 by $540,000, and so $2.16 million is what the town of Carthage has to pay back to the state revolving fund. And due to the rate analysis has been completed by SRF, and SRF did not see any need for you to have to make any changes to the rate structure for the town of Carthage in order to support this project. So it will not affect any customer bills.
This was after the last increase?
This was, yes, following the last increase. So other than that, any questions? Okay. Well, then this will conclude the public meeting. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Stephen.
Thank you.
Okay, six calls, let's go ahead and call the January Carthage Council meeting to order. Roll call, Daniel.
Councilman Gray.
Here.
Councilwoman Green.
Here.
Councilman Womack Gray.
Here.
Councilman Litch.
Here.
Councilman Hedy.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hackett.
Here.
And City Attorney Griffin will be about 10 minutes late.
Okay, the first thing we want to do is, we're going to do an opening prayer, and I ask Vice Mayor Hackett to go ahead and do that for us if we're all bow heads.
Let's pray. "I'm most kind, gracious, and loving heavenly Father, Lord, we're just thankful for this day, and we're thankful for this opportunity that we can gather, Lord. Lord, we're just thankful for all the blessings that you bestow upon us. And, Lord, I just pray for the town of Carthage. I just pray that you'll continue to bless this town, Lord. Be with us as council members and citizens. And, Lord, I just pray that the decisions that we make here today would be pleasing to you and responsible Christian decisions, Lord. Lord, be with those that will, that are going to be dealing with the upcoming storm. Be with our city workers that will be out in it, Lord. I just pray for safety for them. Lord, be with all those that have prayer concerns, whatever they may be, with, whether it be thickness, or a loss of a loved one. I just pray that you'll comfort their family. Lord, most of all, we're just thankful for your son, for it's in his name I pray. Amen."
Let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Did anybody forget that? I know the Vice President forgot that.
I'm going to say, let's plug off.
All right, the first thing on the agenda is going to be considered for approval in the Minnesota December 5th meeting. Does. Speak up so they can hear.
Oh, I'm going to motion too. Sorry.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Scott, you're up on the over 10,000.
One would be easier to pass it out individually as opposed to having to dig through all the papers. So let me know what you prefer.
That works great.
So expense approval, most everything is the normal stuff, moving money to the health insurance fund, TCRS. There are two that I've highlighted for you that, first page is the vendor 398, Safe Industries. This was budgeted on FY '24, '25 budget. The bid was approved by the council, and now you're approving the payment of $68,310. And that's for self-contained breathing apparatus. You got questions about that, Joe Hyatt can speak to that. The next item that is not just the normal payments, or different things, is Tyler Technologies. It's on the page three of four. Tyler Technologies is the utility building software, account management meter, maintenance software that we have, that we've just been implementing. It was budgeted. It has been approved when we beat it all out, and this one just happened to be over $10,000. We've been paying them right along. And we only have one more module to implement, and that's the property tax. And we will all be glad to stick it forward in the transition. But it's already, in my opinion, paid for itself. And just that fine time of day alone is a big help. So that's what I have. Any questions?
I'm making a motion.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? All right, citizens' concerns. This is what I'm going to say about citizens' concerns. You have three minutes to speak. Come up and speak, say whatever you want to say. But when you get back off that podium, it's not time to speak back out. You just sit back there.
Can I say something, please?
Yeah.
Okay. They got three minutes. If they're doing disinformation, let's let them talk that three minutes. And all I know is terms of jury, judge, you can do, we can do the rebuttal if they have.
Yeah, we don't even have to do a rebuttal.
But you know what I mean. Let's, we can, let's just let them talk three minutes, please. Thank you.
Before y'all got here, Mayor Bepka asked me why is a citizen from Deafity Creek interested in a city hall project here in Carthage? And I'll say a couple of reasons. I am the most qualified person in the city, in the county to do this. I did the original town hall for Mayor Joe Anderson in Gordonsville. I'm also the former principal architect for Tennessee, and city architect for Metro. I've done the largest city hall in Tennessee. I'm, previously, 1981, I became registered to practice architecture in Tennessee. Been doing that for almost 50 years. Trying to retire, so I hire architects and engineers now. But my code of ethics for the licensing board requires that when I see violations of the Tennessee Code annotated, that I'm required as a registered architect to report those to the Architecture and Engineering Board. And you've heard me speak before about the issues I had of acquiring this architectural firm without an RFQ process, and I'll speak to that. The state law requires that any public works project, any government agency, any state entity, any nonprofit, has to acquire professional services with an RFQ request for qualification. When I did the Freedom of Information Act and had a nice meeting with Scott Isell, I was informed that the reason they didn't do an RFQ process to hire Upland Design Group, and it was a fine firm, I used to work with them in the state, is that they had a recommendation from the town civil engineer to use this architect. That was not required. And we actually had a follow-up meeting where the council for the city quoted MTS, Municipal Task Advisory Service, that if you did have a prior relationship, like we had with the state of Tennessee, or Metro, with an architect, you could have that architect do work for you under that contract. Since there was no architect's contract with Upland Design Group, and the engineer just recommended, and that doesn't meet Tennessee Code annotated. And it also requires that the entity, i.e. this city council, approve that RFQ process and go through that evaluation, since we didn't do that, another violation. Also in the contract, I've heard it's been stated that that contract is for $30,000. Scott, it's nice enough to give me a copy of that contract. The contract starts at $31,500. It has expenses and other things, 20% on top of that, it goes up. So again, it's an open contract to do a certain work for a new city hall. It's not for a renovation project. One other thing, in the contract, it requires that no work be done before the contract. It was done before the contract.
What's his name?
Who?
Yeah, what's your name?
Mark Schwartz.
Okay.
Questions?
Um, thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council for allowing this time to speak. I just want to follow up a little bit on what Liz just said, because it appears that this architectural firm was brought on board outside of an RFQ, which is required by law in Tennessee. However, if it weren't even required by law, why wouldn't you do an RFQ by practical common sense? You want your council to have as many possibilities as possible to look at, so you can find the best architectural firm that would match the project you want. You can only do that when you send a request for qualifications. That means it's sent to all the architectural firms in middle Tennessee. They get to respond with their packet of qualifications, like we've done for every other professional I've ever experienced that we hired in this community. Excuse me, I'm speaking.
I was talking to the attorney. Continue speaking.
Thank you. So, if I may have your attention, this architectural firm does not be, need to be brought back on board. You need to send a request for qualifications, so you council members have as many possibilities to choose from, from all of the architectural firms in middle Tennessee. If you take one architectural firm, just because it's here, and you've already paid $30,000 for a piece of property we don't even own to put this blueprint on, that's $30,000 of my taxpayer money, your taxpayer money, that's just been thrown away. Do we want to continue working with an architectural firm that allows that to happen? No. As a citizen, I don't want that. And so several citizens I've talked to are asking, please send out a request for qualifications, even if it's not a law. Give yourself the biggest response, the biggest response that you can from all of these architectural firms, so you council choose it. It's not the mayor who chooses it. It's you, the council members, who choose who you want to work with, and who you think is best qualified. And there are little packets that they're going to send to you, are going to have everything they've done as architectural firm, why they could be good for the particular building you want. They're not going to send in a cost. It doesn't involve causes, it's just who is the most qualified. So we're asking you, on behalf of myself and some other citizens I've talked to, please give yourself the widest range of choices to interview as possible. Do it for the citizens, do it for yourselves. This is, this is, and thank you for serving our city as well as you have. We appreciate it. If you would, please follow up on that. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Any other citizens? Would you like to address that again, one more time, RFQ situation?
I don't think I need to.
Well, I don't know if, did you guys hear the attorney's opinion on RFQs before?
No.
He said the three new ones.
There's a state statute that governs when you have to send out requests for qualifications for professional services. It's optional, particularly if you have an existing relationship with, with a firm. So for design or construction services, you don't have to. It is optional. I think Smith was saying that's what you should do. It's not necessarily what you have to do. But if you choose to do that, you have the option to do that, and consider more than just one firm that you already have a relationship with.
So if you want more than one firm, you do need to do the request.
If you want to consider more than one firm, you need to do that. If you're satisfied with what you have, then you don't need to do that. You don't have to.
Okay, thank you.
And this has to be written up. So like, if we were to get a consultant in here, and I'm not just saying one consultant, but if we can get three or four consultants in here to give us an idea, or we tell them what we want, then will they...
Sorry, I walked in halfway through. Are we talking about the city hall building?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And if we weren't, get some consultants come here and help us out to figure out what we want, or we tell them what we want, then is that when they take over and go out, and then we do the request for qualifica, have them, to do the request for qualifications?
What kind of consultant? Like, you're talking about an architecture consultant, but you're really just hiring an architecture firm to do that?
Well, the consultant will find. If you have a consultant that comes in here with a charge.
I can, oh, if somebody's willing to give you advice for free, yeah, why don't you take it?
Oh, I'm just saying, a consultant, you never have a consultant to come in and help anyone for free.
Not that I know of, but that exists. I'm sure you all will be willing to listen.
So I'm, I'm a little unclear on exactly what an RFQ is, a request for qualifications. Mr. Schwartz made, made mention, so if you're, if you're gonna, if you're gonna hire an architect, you send out this big email that, that you're going to do this job, and all these other architects respond?
It's basically an invitation to, to be, where you, yeah, it's an advertisement where you say, we are accepting bids for resumes, essentially. It's the same thing I did when I got hired as city attorney. Send out a request for qualifications, and whoever thinks they're qualified sends in their application materials, and then the city council will review them and select whoever they, they want to use for a particular job.
So, and I know we, we don't know the, what's on people's minds, but is our architect, I guess, is the public saying that they're not qualified?
I don't, I don't know what's, what they're saying. We got the drawings, we got the...
Why, why can't he send out a request for qualifications? This can't.
Yeah, architect, what, what does it, he doesn't need to. Because he's the architect, he's already qualified. You see what I mean?
But he was picked by whom?
It was, go ahead, Scott.
The process was, we asked our civil engineer to come in, and to invite someone to give us an analysis, just a rough analysis of what they thought it would take to rehabilitate this building. That's where the 2. something is a rough estimate came in. Okay, at that point in time, we asked Evan White, our civil engineer, who would you recommend for us to have come in and do, take what we need? We tell them, sit down across the table, tell them what we need, and for them to come up with a solution for us. Okay? Using the Tennessee Code annotated, as I understand it, and as our attorney understands it, we can do that from our civil engineer giving us that recommendation. We could have, and you still can, go through the process of saying, okay, maybe we're not, our existing architectural firm is not qualified, so therefore, we should send out across the nation requests for proposals to whomever we want to, and put it out, and say, hey, we have a project, would you like to, are you interested in giving us and doing what Upland Design Group has done? Would you like to do that? And then they come in, then the council decides, you know, we like this one, or we don't like this one, and you pick whichever professional firm you want to use.
However, cost.
Okay.
That, that part is a no-cost thing. For a request for proposals, a no-cost thing.
RFQ, but they're not going to design it for free.
No, that's right. And if you select a firm, then you do a contract, which we did with Upland Design Group, say, okay. And the chief, and several of us, we sit down across this table, and we said, this is what we need. We don't want... We don't want frill, this is what we need. Put together a design that will meet our needs, okay? And so we contracted with them for, I don't remember exactly how much the amount was, but it was right around $30,000, and they came up with these recommendations that we have, these drawings and these designs, okay? Because we had to have something to begin with, but it meets the minimum qualifications. There's no frill in there. So what I understand the issue is now, it's just like Mr. Hackett said, do you not trust what they have done or you want a totally different design? The option is up to you guys. You can do a request for qualifications and go and pick another architectural firm. If you look and say, hey, we want a green building, okay? Great, then you probably should ask again. But we haven't violated any laws.
You should probably decide what back you're going to build the building and where you're going to build it for you.
That would be the other thing. But the decision was, we know we can't rehabilitate cost effectively here, so why don't we get something to put in front of people's eyes so they can see this is what we're looking for, okay?
I think I'm getting more calls of like, this piece of paper, that piece of paper cost us $30,000. That's the biggest complaint I get.
Good.
I mean, but that's why I was being the same. No, that's not what I'm getting at. What I'm, who, did the council vote to pay the $30,000?
The council approved $1.5 million in the budget.
Okay, so that's part of all of that?
Yes.
Okay, then that, I mean, that.
That was the planning stage money.
Right, okay, that's.
To include that's what we would use.
Land acquisition or whatever.
That's what we would use to pay for the property.
You have to start somewhere.
And so if we don't decide to keep this, then we're going to pay another.
Depending on who you pick.
And Mr. Rader spoke very highly of them.
Now, if you can get a qualified architectural firm to do all this work for free, I say go for it, just make sure they know what they're doing, okay? But personally, doesn't matter to me, I just hate to see us spend citizens' money to do work we've already done, okay?
That was the plan in the beginning when we approved that money, was to get the ball rolling, because this has been kicked down the road so many times and no one's ever done anything.
Yeah, it needs to be, we need a new city hall and a new place to.
But you can do whatever you want to do, but you don't have to do what's been presented, okay? But you can do whatever you want to do with it. Mr. Hackett, you had a question?
No.
Did the 2024 council, did they okay it?
The council before y'all? Yes.
To go with this firm?
But we didn't specifically pick, okay, the $30,000?
No.
It was in the.
It was in the planning stage. We said we need 1.5 million for property thing, architecture, design, something like that. The council agreed, so we moved forward.
And they agreed to move forward, those words were actually stated?
Yes.
To move forward with the project.
So that's why we went ahead and went and got that. And you heard Mr. Rader last week, the attorney, said that they're one of the utmost.
Yes, he did.
Prominent firms in the state, so.
For municipal specific.
For municipal specifically.
We represent the school board in Public County and Upland Design does all the school buildings for Public County.
Yeah, they do have our schools.
So.
And everybody.
We know them and they do good work.
Like, y'all put in y'all's, what y'all wanted for y'all.
We actually sat at this table and said, okay, we need the bare minimum.
We all got to weigh in.
We're not going to go.
Okay, that's what I was getting at, is everybody got to weigh in.
We don't need no extras, we need the bare minimum, because we know it's a big expense.
Yeah.
And right now, I mean, y'all don't get to look where Danielle's office is, but she deals with the public more than anybody, and her office is way back here in the back. So she needs to have an office up towards the front, so it's more convenient for the people that are here.
And that heat, but.
Yeah, well, you wear a jacket when it's hot.
Her hat don't smell weed.
Yeah, and her room is underneath the evidence room, so if they bring in some dope, she gets to smell it all the time. Wonder why she's happy all the time, huh?
Definitely not.
Okay, now we'll move on to the mayor's report. What I've done tonight is I brought, remember how we talked about the bank erosion project and the municipal bond fund? I brought the gentleman in that's going to explain all that to you a lot better than I can, so that way he can tell you about how it's going to work and stuff for the project, if we decide to go that way.
Thank you, Mayor Babcock, members of the board. Kevin Kroschinsky with the Tennessee Municipal League Bond Fund. The TML Bond Fund is a service for Tennessee Municipal League members, of which Carthage, of course, is a member. We were created in 1985 solely for the purpose of helping you with the borrowing process and saving you money on borrowing. We recognize that even for the largest cities in the state, borrowing is an infrequent part of your day-to-day responsibilities, the biggest ones maybe do it once a year. So they created us to help our membership as a service to the membership to comply with all state and federal regulations. The, I guess the specific programs that we offer are three different options, the first one being what we know as our alternative loans program, and those are anything that you can pay back in 12 years or fewer, and that's under $5 million. Haven't done any $5 million loans for 12 years yet, most of our customers are not clamoring for that. But the state law allows us to go up to that amount for 12 years or fewer, and it's a very simple process. The second program that we offer is called our fixed rate draw loan programs, and it's akin to more like construction-style loans. If anybody's ever built a house before, your proceeds would be placed on a draw basis, so that amount, whatever you needed, the minimum of that program is a million dollars. But anything that you needed to spend that money on would be on a draw basis, and the proceeds or your interest would only accrue on what's outstanding as opposed to the full amount. So say you have a million-dollar project and it's a three-year construction window, 300,000, 300,000, 400,000 in the last year, first year you're only paying interest on 300,000 and not the million, kind of how that works. Our third program that we offer is our new long-term fixed rate program. That one is for larger-scale projects that you need more than 25 years to pay off, we can go up to 30 years on that. The trade-off there is that it's a lump sum deposit, you lose the construction loan feature, but you're able to go out to the 30th year if you need something. The second one's limited to 25 years or fewer. Specifically talking about the Riverbank Erosion Project, the information I received from the town on that was a $640,000 partnership essentially with the Army Corps. That would fall into the first option, the alternative loans program. So what we do as our service is we work with a network of banks in the state of Tennessee, as well as a couple of large, three large national banks. And we send out, we send out the bids on your behalf in order to deliver the best rate to you. There was a question I guess about working with local banks. Absolutely, anybody can work with local banks. In fact, we actually partner with two of the banks that operate within Carthage that have expressed interest in working with you guys. That'd be Wilson Bank and Trust and Smith County Bank, which is owned by a parent bank that we work very closely with. So we would send out the rate request on your project on your behalf, and at that point, we deliver the very best rate to you. In some circumstances, people want to know what their local bank bid as well. So in those instances, what we like to do is we say, okay, well, this was the best rate, here's your local bank. And that way you can make a decision, informed decision on your behalf of what you want to do and the course of action that you choose to do, because the bond fund is not a municipal advisory firm, we do not provide municipal financial advice. What we do is we provide you with options. And then we help you with facilitating the process and also we get all necessary state approvals, federal approvals and bank approvals for any loan that we do prior to the loan ever closing. We prepare, we work closely with a law firm to prepare all necessary resolutions and the documentation that would go into the signing process. And that way, the, I like to tell people, the heaviest lifting that you have to do as a city is generally collection of documents, your budget, your audit, but your audit's available on a public website, so we don't ever even bother you for that. And then at the council level, the heaviest lifting, of course, is approving any resolution. Everything else would be approved prior to you guys entering to any financing agreement, and we've done that 1,750 times for a little over $5.2 billion. So we feel like we've got the process working pretty well, and we also like to think that the service that we provide on behalf of our membership is something that we value very closely, because our board is composed of city officials. Spread across the state, we're a function of the Tennessee Municipal League, so we are guided and governed, of course, by a board of local officials that are elected officials. So we get the feedback constantly on what we're doing right, what we're doing wrong, and what we can do to improve our service for you. Let's see, given the nature of the project that you're talking about and the amount, while I did say that the specific amount would fit, of course, into the $640,000 would fit into the alternative loan program, you know, if there are other projects, smaller things that you fit into it, you could get into the construction loan potentially as well, that would be a million dollars. And the closing costs on those loans are 0.6%, which is $6,000 per million, and that's all-inclusive, you don't pay another fee out of pocket to close the loan. Anything under a million is a $500 closing cost, and that goes to our bond and tax council provide an opinion that says this is a valid tax-exempt obligation, and that way we can deliver to you a valid tax-exempt rate, which is the best rate that you can get as a borrowing government. So one other feature, of course, on the construction loan side is, you know, say you were able to come up with 800,000 or your project cost escalates to 850 or something like that, you, of course, could enter into the fixed rate draw loan program, the construction style loan. To the extent the project comes in at about 800 or 850,000, you would cancel the remaining unused proceeds, and those would never accrue interest and they would be deducted off of your amortization schedule, and it would just be like a no harm, no foul type situation. So with that, I'm happy to address any specific questions. I did, we haven't bid this project specifically yet, but the most recent quote I got under $1 million on a 12-year loan was 4.79%. Debt service on that, on that amount would be about $71,400 a year, just for frame of reference, thinking about it going forward. But as I said, I'm happy, I'm very happy to be here today and very happy to spend this time with you, and I'm also ready to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you.
Any questions?
I have a question, because I know it's come to me. Why would we use municipal bond fund as opposed to just going to a local bank and saying, hey, we want to borrow $640,000?
Great question. So the reason why most of our borrowers use us is because, like I said, this is a pretty infrequent part of your day-to-day responsibilities, and there are a lot of legal obligations that go in with obligating a future council, future board of mayor and alderman to any debt service. So we do this as part of our career, as our career, this is what we do. So we ensure that we comply with all bidding requirements, all necessary state and federal approvals. We get everything approved by the comptroller's office prior to it ever even appearing on a desk for anyone to sign. That's just our service. It is something that you can do on, at least on the note side, like the 12-year loans that are capital outlay notes, we'll call them. So that is something you can do locally if you comply, and you just have to comply with bidding. A bank might require bond and tax council opinion, and then, of course, you just have to get comptroller approval and ensure that you file the report on debt obligation with the comptroller's office as well. But that is a possibility, should the town want to pursue it on their own. You know, what some of our borrowers do is they reach out to the preferred local bank and then they reach out to us, and that way they at least have gotten the rate quotes. And of course, there's a minimum of three bids that you have to try to get in any informal bid process. But some of our borrowers do do that. They don't necessarily defer solely to us, but the vast majority of communities that we've worked with over the years, just, they use us, they trust us to do what's right by them, because like I said, we're governed by city officials. So we do the best work that we absolutely can for you and ensure that you don't ever get the comptroller's office calling you guys on the back end saying, why did you do this? You did it wrong.
Don't leave that. And do our local banks, they're available to bid on, whenever you put it out for bid, they're able to bid on the whole project as well, is that a correct statement?
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. We, you know, we're always happy to reach out to any bank that you work with locally. One thing that we do ask, especially in any new bank in our program, so the way that the bond fund gets paid is we receive 0.15% of the outstanding balance of all the loans through our program. That is not a separate invoice to you, that is something that the banks have collected within the rate and they sent to us as part of our partnership within the program. So new banks, of course, would have to work with us on that. But we do partner with Wilson Bank and Trust and Smith County Bank currently.
I guess that's, everybody satisfied?
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate you guys sharing time.
There's a couple of other things under the mayor's report. One thing I want to do is let you guys know that the new, have y'all got the site to do your training?
All the council training.
Yeah, the council training, yes.
Yeah, I've got like five done.
Okay, because if you don't get that done in the first year, you have to file for an extension. And while that extension's going on, it reduces our chance of getting grants from the state, because one of our council members is not done. We checked with, yeah, that place. Was it MTS? Yeah, MTS. Can't remember what else. And they said that if we have someone that doesn't have it done, we start losing grant possibilities and it affects SRF loans and everything. Because it's utilities.
Follow the directions, go to the website.
And if you, when you get it done, you just got to turn your certificates into Danielle.
Try to, wow, is it rigged and then I control.
Somebody was an overachiever.
Use your council.
You fourteen? I'd also like to add something to the agenda, and that would be nominating Councilman Lefwitch to the planning commission. Yeah, make that motion now if we want to do it now.
I'll say it.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, department reports, let's start with Steve Key.
Y'all have any questions? We have a lot of water in December, like nine, 10 million gallon coming through, about 8pm with I and I. So that is a lot of the I and I project we was talking about, been here for years and we've got, it's like everything else, can't keep your can down the road, so we're going to start picking. But other than that, we worked through the holiday season real good. No got any questions, I'll.
All right, rest.
I don't want to come in here every month and give y'all like pumpage numbers and stuff like that, which will bore you to death, so I'm going to touch on some things that'll happen in the new year for the new members of the county that's coming up. January every year generally starts the season where if companies and suppliers are going to raise their rates, they do it. Matter of fact, I got a notice today that one of my chemical suppliers is going to raise their rate 8%. But just to give you an idea of, I know everybody's, you know, still up in there about the water rate increase, which we all agree is a lot, but we haven't had a rate increase in eight years. So just to give you an idea of what we've run into, I don't use that much chemicals at the plant, but just my sodium hypochlorite, which is your chlorine that's in your water, since COVID hit, since 2020 to 2021 till now, is up 85.7% in cost. I use a coagulant in the plant to help get that dirt out. That coagulant, which is the chemical that went up 8% I was just telling you about, since 2021 is up 44.6%. So when we raise these rates like we're doing, it's not because anybody wants to, I know nobody wants to raise the rate. But it gets to a point to where, like any other business, you've got to pay the bills. And that's just, I'm just one little area of a water system. This is going across the board, in supplies, labor, anybody we hire to do the work. to do the work. So I just want you to understand that that's the reason that these things happen. And when you don't have a rate increase for eight years, this stacks up. So at some point, you have to do something. I recently attended UT Knoxville, done a class on asset management in Murfreesboro here recently, and I attended that. The gentleman that sat in front of me in the class was a, he was one of the law and enforcement division of T-Bor, which is the Tennessee Board of Utility Regulation. And the instructor went around the room and asked once, or the class, there was about 30 people in this class, how many utilities had raised their rates? And only about three had raised their rates this year. And then, of course, with my look, he went around and said, how much did you raise yours? How much did you raise yours? Well, when it got to me, the whole room gasped. And the guy who's the enforcement, he's the guy who comes in when you go into the red. He's the guy that'll show up to help you straighten it out. When we explained we hadn't had a rate increase in eight years, he came around and gave me the thumbs up. He said, that's aggressive, but, you know, you have to do what you have to do, or they come in and do it for you. So just so you understand, I try to come in every month and give y'all some information like that going forward. And, of course, I'll always be happy to answer any specific questions you have about the treatment plan or any operation. But generally, Scott gives you all the financial information you're gonna need for what we're spending and what to spend on. So unless there's something specific y'all'd like to know about, and I'll have that for you every time I come in here, if y'all let me know what you want. But other than that, that's all I've got.
Thank you.
Any questions? Derek?
I don't have a whole lot to report. Whole Avenue project has kind of slowed down due to holidays, sickness, and people taking vacation. But we are still on track to finish that in the next three, four weeks, probably. And then we'll move on to Smotherman Avenue. Other than that, things running smooth, haven't had any major blow works. But if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Les?
I don't have any. Y'all got some questions?
Red?
Yeah.
Flows on the truck.
We got a good plan in place.
Did you hit Lake Terrace the first thing in the morning?
Brand new place.
You don't call South Carthage about that.
Red?
Everything's going good. Police department this month, got through the holidays. There's been too much status quo. I can see what's going on, getting ready for the snowstorm, obviously. Be working hand and hem with the street department, obviously. They'll be helping us to make sure we can get where we need to go, and the citizens get where they need to go. Hopefully, it'll be unimpeded. If you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer.
And while we're talking about that, I'll let you know the plan. The plan is we have two salt boxes and one plow. So those two will be out, and we got the skid steer. We got a snow plow for that. So that's gonna hit like the parking lot, and we're gonna try and use it on Main Street. And then there'll be a salt box behind it, salting it as it plows. So we've got two trucks. We've never had that before. Got two salt boxes, never had that before. So we're getting ready to be able to handle a little more snow than we have been. But the plan's in place. People already know who's coming in, going to work. Everything's good.
Thank you, guys.
Hey, Joe?
Yes, sir.
Usually, you're back there.
I usually am. Scott mentioned the SCBA. That's what people generally refer to as our packs, what we wear on our back. We finished replacing the 21-year-old stuff. That normally has a life expectancy of 10 years. So we've been good stewards with it. But we had replaced those due to the fact that I can't get parts for the old ones anymore, and they're fading. I've had people that had to leave a burning building because of the airline wouldn't stay connected to the mail. That's why we had to do that. 15 calls in December, y'all got a written report there. I found this to be interesting. First six months this year, we had 160 emergency dispatches. In the last six months, we had 100. I hope to have y'all a yearly report by next meeting. And, you know, as the others have said, if there's anything you need to ask, I'll do my best to answer.
On the medical assist, Joe, is that just where the first responders from y'all go out to help? Okay.
It is.
I thought so, but I wouldn't.
You just have more fire.
That's good.
That's good.
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. That's all the committee reports. Oh, wait, Scott, I keep forgetting you. Keep forgetting y'all. I keep forgetting you.
Maybe it's wishful thinking. Section 6 of our budget ordinance, which you have a copy of in the book that we provided you last month, requires that, gives us the authorization with mayor's approval to move monies up to $25,000 and notify the council. So to implement the council compensation, the budget was $1. It is now, adjusted it by $1,599 to a total of $1,500 to finish out the year. And we took the money out of finance administration's IT support assist and software purchase. So have advised you on that. Okay. Next thing is you have the financial report. They did it January 9. And if you pass, tell me, y'all, go ahead and back up. It's the big report. Once that town of Carthage is in it. Next time, we'll hand it out to you. It'll be so hard to find. Okay, key financial metrics, which is a synopsis, summarization of the major things, which you have every bit of the detail attached to this. But general fund cash, we have $4,884,450 at December 31. Street aid cash, $252,409. Just for your information, that goes up about $7,000 to $8,000 every month, plus whatever interest is earned on it. And that's for placing streets. Water sewer fund cash, at December 31, we had $2,506,606. The state revolving fund loan debt, which you heard, if it all gets approved, will be expanding come next.
November, December?
Next November, December. We have $1,632,976 of debt. That is all state revolving fund loan debt. And that gets paid off about $10,300 something dollars a month. So most of that is principal. Interest is very, very good, although it's higher now with this new one. So in good shape there. The annualized water sewer fund operating profit to date is $371,716. Just always remember, we're fixing to put on the depreciation schedule, $124,950 for the bank erosion project that we spent here in December. And then, once we begin, finish Whole Avenue, that will be depreciation scheduled, and that will even decrease the profit. And then, once we get Smotherman going, all those projects will be put in depreciation onto our profit end of it. And then you have your annual pension that will be added to that as an expense in like the end of the year. General fund cash ratio, 126 to 1, which means we're very solid. Many businesses do well to do a 1 to 1 ratio. Water sewer fund ratio, 14 to 1. We're still very solvent there, but that has gone down. If you compare your financial statements, you'll see that it went down because we have spent some monies on the erosion, bank erosion project. And then, the water sewer fund debt ratio, we're still 3.8 to 1, which is good. A 1 to 1 means you can get it done. We don't want to ever get that low. Okay. Tax receipts, I'd ask you to turn to page 7 of this report. Just so you know, because I think there's a lot of misunderstanding, the state of Tennessee and Carthage and every other municipality, their biggest amount of revenue comes from sales tax. It's not property taxes. Okay? But thankfully, in the town of Carthage, you can look at the end of December, where it says 2024 property taxes. Of the amount that we're going to expect to collect, which we never expect to get at all, people had paid $239,708 year-to-date activity. That's the very first line, okay, under local tax revenues. So what I'm saying to you is, that's good. January will be another good chunk. And then February, we'll collect that, which we're probably gonna get the biggest chunks of. I understand this is a lot. You don't have questions on this particular report. But on the prior month's report, I always ask you, do you have any questions about any finances or any of that that I can help you with?
I do have a question.
Okay.
And we're gonna go back to, I can't remember, December 5. But on the, I think we had put it down that we were charging South Carthage a monthly bill. Are they current with their?
They're current every month.
Okay, all right.
I will bill them, they don't get their bills out to the 16th of each month. And then on the 16th or 17th, I will ask for how many gallons they bill. And then, we send an invoice to them, and they have always paid before the end of the month.
Okay, thank you.
Now, this month, they're gonna get another big bill, and it's gonna be that 30% of the $124,000. And so, but they've been well aware that that was gonna happen.
Okay, thank you, Scott.
Any other questions? And I might say to you, if you want to know how much they've paid us, if you'll go to page 7 of your expense report. Page 7, it'll be in the water sewer fund. It'll be page 15 of your report. You'll look down the left-hand side. I'll let you get there, page 15. Up at the top, it says operating metered sales revenues. Either one would work. If you want to know how much South Carthage has paid, if you look on the left-hand column, that first subsection, it's account number 41352,37240. Says service to South Carthage. You have a column there that says month-to-date. That's what they would have paid in December, depending on which one you're looking at. But the one I'm looking at is the one dated 12/31. Through the year, they've paid us $62,885. So it used to average about $7,000 to $8,000 a month, but with the new contract, it's $12,000.
Thank you.
Scott, on this bank erosion project, you know, they made the suggestion possibly to do the, well, like, when we have to cut our check, will it be one check for this amount, or will we cut a few? So that, I guess, makes the decision whether we're gonna do the, like, the million-dollar line of credit versus the other option.
Sure. Well, number one, don't stress about the timing of it, because it's gonna be 2026 before they enter the construction phase. And so I asked that very question, when will we need to come up with this additional money? And he said it would be whenever they begin the construction phase, they'll want our share upfront. So we'll write the whole check for the remaining amount that we have. Of course, we'll bill South Carthage up to their percentage. But that's the point in time where we will actually need the cash. The issue becomes, takes a while to get the financing all in line. So we're probably about three to four months ahead of that. But if we got, whatever way we're gonna finance it, we need to have that in place, okay? Because when we start Smotherman Avenue, we're gonna be chucking out change in a big way, okay? So our cash flow will be the issue. So I would like to see the, or whatever we make our decision about how we're gonna finance it, that we have that in place, so I know how to move forward with financing, all of it together.
And one other thing about, and I should have asked him, and I apologize, but what, has he got a fee? What's their fee? Or are they just part of?
Tennessee Municipal League is a conglomeration of county governments, county and municipal governments, okay? And so a long time ago, they came together and said, hey, we need a way to help municipalities, particularly small ones, to get financing. It's a complex story of how it started, but the headquarters is in a legal agreement in Clarksville, Tennessee. And that's the agreement that's used now for us to be able to get better rates as a nonprofit, okay? So in normal business practice, if a business wants to borrow money, they go to a bank, and a bank will say, okay, I'll give you five years business loan, and then we'll do a balloon loan, and you refinance at that time. They're not gonna commit that long. Well, here, they commit at least 12 years. Yeah, they get like, he said it, I think it's 0.06 of the outstanding principal.
That's paid by the bank itself. It's not, he said it was paid by the bank.
I can assure you, we would pay.
Well, eventually, we're gonna pay for it. But I'm saying, that's, they added up a half percent of interest is what they did.
And again, the city is a member of TML. So this is a nonprofit that we are a member of, which goes back to them, to help negotiate for better rates.
The only advantages are, local banks, apart from this, probably not gonna negotiate with us for less than a five-year balloon loan. And then we're gonna have to go through it each time. They do all of that part of it. Plus, we would have to get the legal opinions, and I don't know if our president attorney and them deal with all the bond.
There's always outside bond counsel that has to do bond. We don't do bond opinions. So you have to hire a national law firm to do that at $1,000 an hour.
Yeah. So that's why.
500,000.
Bond fund does all that stuff, because they have established relationships and volume and so forth. They can get it better.
But at that point, who are we responsible to? That bank that we choose, or this organization?
To the bank.
Okay.
To the bank. Now, I've never done one, but I've researched enough. We will owe the bank. We'll have a note with the bank itself. And I have talked to representatives from each of the local banks and said, hey, we're looking to do this. If you're interested in being a part of it, you need to get ahold of this guy and get registered with municipal banks. Because if we can use local banks, that's what I think is preferred to do. But not all banks are gonna choose to be a part of this, because you have to have certain things.
Paperwork.
Paperwork. And they may not choose to be a part of it. And that's.
But too hard.
Their decision. But they have been contacting and say, hey, we're looking into this. Go ahead and get ahead of this if you want to be a part of it. My, one of the, I think the council needs to guide me at some point in time. You're gonna have to say to me, hey, Scott, to go forward with this, let's go ahead and pursue Tennessee municipal bond fund. And that's when he was talking about resolutions. That's not tonight. It's not next month. It's probably June or July, unless the Corps comes back and says, hey, we gotta push this back till 2027. And that's possible. But I think the fact that we've put in the money, it's been acknowledged. So we're in the design phase now. We've paid our part. But I think the fact that we've put in the money, uh, it's been acknowledged, uh, so we're in the design phase now, we've paid our part, they know we are gonna follow through with such things. You know, I think when they have their monies, they'll move forward, so hopefully, nothing falls in the river till maybe it does.
Probably not.
Another question's of me, please. Thank you.
Alright, next item on the agenda is unfinished business, this is gonna be the second reading of the FEMA ordinance that, uh, Mr. Raider explained to y'all last year, last year, it was last year.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion, got a second?
I'll do it.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is new business, this is the first reading of the budget amendment, we all suggested that we hire that other additional employee, so we have to move the money from one account to another. So, that'd be B A two-zero-two-five-zero-one-zero-nine dash one, and that's for the, uh, budget amendment to move the money for the new position.
One full-time position, two part-time.
Yeah, well, part-time position, they don't have to do it because I think that's a separate fine item, I think. It's in the ordinance. It's in the ordinance, yeah. Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Call in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Yeah, and we're gonna do a roll call after this money.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilman Green?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilman Leffler?
Yes.
Councilman Petty?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hackett?
Yes.
Okay, the next one is, uh, is a resolution from T C R S. What that does is allows our guys that were in the military to buy back their time, it's no cost to the city, doesn't cost the city anything, we just have to have this resolution on file so that they can actually apply for their combat time or whatever, and pay it back and get their retirement years going back. So, it's like, doesn't affect the city in any way, except for just the employees being able to buy back their time.
I'll make a motion, we approve it.
Second, call in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Next one's a resolution approving for the applying of a C D B G grant. What that is for, if we're applying for a grant for more water lines and sewer lines, this is a, we applied last year, and they said that we asked for too much money, so we're asking for, I think it's seven hundred and fifty, was it seven fifty?
Five hundred.
Five hundred thousand for this, this fiscal year for water and sewer lines.
Make a motion?
Motion?
Second.
Call in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Okay, and the next one's. We're just applying for a grant, we're not, yeah, we're not, we're not spending money or moving any money. The next one's the approval of the bid for the traffic control box, we received, what, one bid?
One bid, stansel.
Yeah, one bid.
It's in their packets.
Then you had the bid in your package. Yeah, the bids for that and the Smotherman water line bids. They don't have Smotherman.
Yeah.
I think that bid includes, uh, doing the box up there, the traffic control box up there, putting in two pressure strips, one on each side of Third Avenue, to help keep traffic moving towards downtown.
The loop.
And then, also, I think it is, uh, stansels recommendation to, I think, update the signals, signals as well, so, suggest.
We do need this. Yeah, that's the one that keeps, last motion, motion, you got a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilman Green?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilman Leffler?
Yes.
Councilman Petty?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hackett?
Yes.
The next one's the same thing, except for it's the bid for the pipe that we are buying for Smotherman Avenue.
I'll second.
Roll call, please, or any discussion?
Did, did we, you just get one bid, or?
No, there's three bids.
And then, the best bids on top, that's what we're voting on?
Well, we're taking the cheapest, the lowest bid, yes.
Which is Ferguson?
No, it should be Ferguson, Ferguson's bid is lower, but they didn't include all the, they didn't include fire hydrants or the risers for the fire hydrants, put it up another fifteen to twenty thousand.
I wondered, I was looking at that before the meeting, I thought Ferguson came in lowest, but they had included everything we did.
They have all the stuff on there.
Okay, okay.
So, Southern Pipe.
Southern Pipe is the lowest bid.
Okay. That's all the discussion I had on that.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilman Green?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilman Leffler?
Yes.
Councilman Petty?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hackett?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is, I've had a couple citizens talk to me about Spring Street. They're wanting us to stripe it with a double yellow line, because when they come across that hill up there, there's always someone on the other side of the road, so I think it's a good idea that we do stripe.
That's a good and simple way to solve that.
Yeah, so, I just, I don't think it'll be over ten thousand, but I just wanted y'all to be aware of what was going on and what your thoughts were on that.
Motion to do it.
Motion to do it. Do you have a second? All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is either to vote to hire or keep our architect.
Who is the architect?
That Upland group.
Make a motion to keep him.
Motion to keep.
I second that.
To keep her right now. This one right up here, this architect here, and so, we're not gonna try to get any other bids for any other architects.
That, that's what this, that's what the vote's for.
The vote is to?
Keep, keep Upland group as our, as our cap, as our architects for this project. Because we already paid them thirty thousand dollars, why we, we don't want to pay someone else another thirty thousand to start over.
Oh, yeah. So, why, why do we have to vote on this at all?
Because.
What, what in addition is, or i- if we, but we don't even have any land. Th- this has been thought on this. I think we, we need an architect at some point, no doubt, we've had one, we've got one. Do we, do we have to vote to, to keep? I mean, what else are they gonna do?
Well, it just depends, I mean, if you vote to keep, then we don't have to get all the R F Qs together and send those out, those take a long time to get together, because you have to tell them how big the building you want, what size the rooms are, you have to give them all the information to do the, the R F Q one.
Do we have to pay him like a retire, retirement fee or a monthly fee?
No, he's done.
Okay.
I guess my opinion is, I, I don't know why, why we, we need to vote for anything at this point in the, in the stature where we're at, we don't have a, we don't have land. If down the road, we find a spot, or we make a, make a decision, which, from what I understand, we, after the workshop, no big decision was made, right?
No, it, it happens that way ninety percent of the time.
So, I'm, I, I guess my recommendation would be table that?
I second.
Well, you can't, you can't, we had to vote on the motion, so on first, then you can make another motion if it doesn't pass. Any more discussion?
Well, we'd already paid them, if we hired another one, then we're gonna pay them again and do the same thing we've already got, right? So, we pay double, or we stay where we stand?
Yeah, I mean, it's, the, the reason that is, is because what'll happen is, if we don't vote to hire one or keep one or whatever, we're gonna have the same thing every meeting, people coming in and go, why haven't you done your R F Qs? Why don't you do R F Qs? Why don't you do this? Why don't you do that? We don't have to do that, so let's just get that out of the way, knock it off the plate, so people don't keep coming back in and hammering us why we're not doing something that we don't have to do. I mean, we're not gonna pay him any more money, we're not, they're just, to the architect of record for the project.
So, can we vote to fire them at any time?
Or get another one? Where are you gonna fire? I mean, they've done, they've done their work, but I mean, if we need anything tweaked to these plans, we want to use the same group.
Yeah.
Like, if you say, hey, that, that council room's too big, I want, go back to the architect, say, I want you to re-modify this.
Yeah.
You don't want to give those plans to another architect to say, here, deal with this, they're not gonna be happy about that. That's my opinion.
So, where will we add?
Wait, we're either.
Discussion.
There's a motion made to keep, so if we gotta vote on that, then if you want to do the other motion, if that one doesn't carry, then we'll go to the other motion. All in favor of keeping the same architect?
Uh-huh.
All opposed?
No.
So, we got three no's, three yeses, I'm voting yes to break the tie, we're keeping the architect. Okay, the next one on the agenda is, uh, the parking ordinance that we just redid. I was gonna let Attorney Griffin speak to the ordinance change, or Britt, either one.
We can do a combination if you want.
We just, it's one, it's one, it's like one line.
So, yeah, long story short.
It's one line in the ordinance.
Myself, City Reporter Vane, some planner, Shannon Copas, and we went up there to meet the city attorney to work on updating the parking ordinance in town, was half of it essentially is nineteen eighty-three, let's just be real. It's got stuff in there still, about meters and all this kind of stuff, so a lot of it had to come out, so we updated it, I think there was one part in here, talked to the city attorney earlier about it, about, uh, I think we need to change a portion of it.
In the general penalty clause, one thing we left in, because we didn't talk about taking it out, um, it says it's only a five-dollar fine if you pay it within seven days, but if you don't pay it within seven days, it's a fifty-dollar fine, you have to go to municipal court. Britt thinks that, uh.
They would need to take it out.
And it just needs to be fifty if you violate the parking.
I think, yeah, and I wanted y'all's opinion on it, too, the, uh, city judge also.
When's the last time you wrote a parking ticket?
We don't write a whole lot.
That's what I'm saying.
Because the parking ordinance right now is just, it's almost useless, I just hate to be honest, that's just is what it is. So, what we're trying to do is make it have a little bit of teeth behind it, that way, if you have to write, so, a lot of times, you write the ordinance, okay, that's what we try to do. Uh, we're not here to make, you know, make a bunch of money off of people, it's not what we're trying to do, we're just trying to fix problems.
I'll do it again.
But I wanted y'all's opinion on it, should we keep it flat, you know, just a flat fine, fifty dollars, you know, if you get a parking ticket kind of thing? Uh, city judge kind of recommended something similar to that, obviously, y'all said.
So, the council can pass this ordinance, subject to that amendment, that you take that part out, the five-dollar part, you can take that part out.
Where is the parking problem at?
It's not really a problem in, per se, it's just we just.
Oh.
Yeah, we're not having a problem, it's just, we've talked about it for a long time, we need to update it, that's, that's, that's the gist of it, is we can sneak it up there. There's still stuff in there, like I said, about the parking meters and stuff in there, I mean, majority of this had to come out, uh, it's just not stuff that we have anymore, two-hour parking on Main Street, two-hour parking around the square, we don't force that, it's not been forced.
Miss Lucy Bradley.
Probably twenty years since I've worked here.
She was a mayor, man.
So, stuff like that, just had to be updated.
There was something about a railroad crossing.
Yeah, there's railroad crossings.
We don't have a railroad.
Have we ever?
No.
Not in cars.
I didn't remember once.
They were hoping.
You know, we eventually have to write tickets, we want something that has, you know, we can.
To compete.
Yeah.
And these have been, you know, I think in the previous, it said something about paying three dollars to the city reporter, you know, I mean, it's, it's ridiculous.
She don't get, she don't get to keep, she's just gonna take it.
Maybe I'm not doing it.
Most of our tickets that we write, if it's a speeding ticket, it's usually about a hundred and fifteen dollars, um, you know, running stop signs, a hundred and ten, a hundred and fifteen bucks, it's all about right there in that area.
Parking ticket.
Parking tickets, obviously, aren't as bad as most of those, but they need to be something, obviously, more than three dollars or five dollars, if that makes sense.
I think so.
It's not even worth it, you can't even write the ticket that much.
Is your opinion, like a fifty-dollar flat rate?
I don't have any opinion on, that's a, that's a political question, but.
Y'all decided what.
But Britt thinks it needs to be fifty bucks, so.
I might agree with you for fifty.
So, they agreed to fifty, y'all agreed to fifty dollars?
Do an amendment to fifty.
So, you can have this ordinance subject to that amendment, and I'll, I'll write up that change, if that's what you want.
So, you have to make a motion to pass this resolution.
Make a motion to pass this resolution. With the amendment.
As I say.
She just, just second, okay, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Roll call.
Roll call?
I mean, we're dealing with money.
That's true.
I guess so.
I'm just asking.
We'll never collect any, but go ahead.
Well, I, I just like to.
Roll call.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilman Green?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilman Leffler?
Yes.
Councilman Petty?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hackett?
Oh, yes. Motion carries, okay, that's the last item on the agenda, what I want to do, if y'all will take time over the next couple months, look over the charter. We need to have a meeting on getting our charter changed, it's so old and antiquated, it's got so much stuff in there that we need to update. Just put, just take, make copy of it, write down your questions and changes you want to do, and we'll have a meeting on that, and we'll come together, because it takes about a year to a year and a half to get it changed. We have to send it all up to legislation, it's gotta be approved and sent back down.
And your binders have it, so if you guys want to highlight anything, that's yours to have, keep, do whatever you want.
We'll try and get that after we get to the budget process, because the budget process is next.
When does it start, sir?
Uh, February.
That's what I was thinking, that was.
First, we're going to the department's first workshop, it'll be in March.
Yes, in March, April, and then hopefully, May, June. Alright, that's it. Motion?
Motion to.
Oh, wait, I need, we need to vote on, add him to the planning commission. I make a motion, no, we voted to add him to the agenda.
Oh.
Oh, I didn't know.
That's what I was informed, motion to add John to the planning.
Will you address the council on the, all the emails yesterday, and what the conclusion came of that?
Sure, 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 that was, uh.
You wanna, you wanna finish?
Let's finish the motion, and I'll address all that stuff that was crazy.
Did somebody second that?
Yes. Sam seconded it.
Third and fourth.
Okay, I, I have it, okay, thanks.
Okay, so, we'll, we'll just go into the discussion part, and I'll explain the email. Hey, we, we had a citizen that, uh, said that we were having a planning commission meeting that it was illegal. And, uh, of course, we do what we're supposed to do, we contacted our attorney, and the meeting was not illegal, I can appoint a temporary person to the planning commission to fill in, so, a vacancy for now. You guys, it has to be a council member, so until you guys vote for him to go on to the council, I put him on there as temporary, because no one else expressed any interest in it. So, for some reason, that everything that we do is always gonna be illegal or immoral or something wrong with it, so just to plan on getting those emails in the past, in the future, because no matter what we do, it's gonna be wrong, so.
Well, I will take the nomination to be the council's representative on the planning commission, however, if anyone else is interested, that is definitely okay, too, so, if anyone else is interested, I'm certainly okay with it.
How many people are volunteering for extra meetings?
Not I. Who does volunteer to help for a temporary?
And you the man for the job.
Situation, so they can have their meeting last night to help the citizen that needed to have the meeting and a vote. So, I'm glad if anyone else wants it, that, that's totally fine.
And you guys can rotate out, I mean, if he decides to come off, we can put someone else on, whatever y'all want to do. We need another one at the end of this month, they rotate off every year.
Take it, next one, no.
Yeah, but I get to, I get to appoint this one, I have to bring it to y'all, I just appoint somebody, so, there's no confusion there, I hope. Alright, let's go ahead and vote on making John the planning commission, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Now, we'll take a motion.
Go adjourned.
There you go. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Congratulations, have a good meeting, guys.